Good evening, welcome to the June 30th special meeting of the Board of Education. Would you take role, please, Joy?
Sure. Mr. Wickliffe?
Here.
Mr. Boyd? Mr. Beveridge? Mr. McCune?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Selter? Mr. Geary?
Here.
Please join with the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start off here with the action consent agenda items before you, 2.01 through 2.04. Is there any questions from anybody about anything that you'd like to visit on?
No, but I would move to approve items 2.01 through 2.04.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCune, second by Mr. Wickliffe.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
All right, moving on to action bids, contracts, and agreements, 3.01 through 3.12 we have in there. Is there anything that anybody wanted to visit about? I had one, but I'll let somebody else go first if they want it. I was gonna ask about 3.01, the athletic apparel and equipment, just to kind of see, I know sometimes brand apparel becomes a very important piece for people. I'm just kind of curious if we could make sure the, maybe talk about the process that we went through and who was involved, that type of thing?
Yeah.
Possible?
Dr. McMullin's gonna step up and walk through the process.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so the process we followed really has been going on for almost 18 months. It really, COVID kind of put a bit of a pause on it, but really, the procurement department, Scott Carpenter and Ryan Floyd did a great job of leading this. The subcommittee included district folks and building folks, myself, Mr. Hutchison, Clint Albers, Mr. Brady, others. And then, building level, we had high school and middle school representation. Procurement put out a RFP and had two vendors respond to that, and so they both presented and were scored, and then a vendor was selected. And then, once that vendor was selected, that vendor came back and we brought in all the secondary principals and athletic directors. And within that second vendor, there was kind of two options between two brands, and so they brought in samples, kind of talked about the two programs and the difference between the two of the winning vendor. And from there, then we got input from all the middle and high schools at that point in time and made the selection.
So we had representation from buildings, sports, activities, all that.
Absolutely. So even on the, on the original committee, we had both athletic directors and activity directors. And then, once we came back to hear from the selected vendor of the two options that were there, the two brands, then we had both principals and ADs and activity directors from all of our secondary schools present to see it, hear it, and then give feedback.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, anybody else have anything else?
I didn't.
On there. All right. I'd look for a motion, then, please.
Move to approve items 3.01 through 3.12 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wickliffe, second by Ms. Schultz.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
And then we have a couple of action other items here, 4.01 on an easement, and 4.02, which is our, one of our main reasons for the, for this evening's meeting, to approve the year-end transactions. Any comments for that, or? Mr. Hutchison, I believe he's gonna make a little presentation.
Do you wanna go ahead and do 4.01 and then we can?
Yeah, sure, let's do that.
Move to approve item 4.01 as presented.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Wickliffe, second by Mr. McCune.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Hutchison, 4.02?
Good evening. As most of you remember, we meet this evening to approve final transfers for the fiscal year. Transfers are considered a purchase, and that's why the board needs to convene and approve any of them that I recommend this evening. I do actually do present, I actually do a workshop about doing presentations, and one of the things I say is, if you ever say, if you could read this, it would say, don't ever put it in the presentation. But this is the, you actually have a hard copy right next to you at your seat, and I'm gonna walk section by section, divided into thirds. And the purpose of this schedule, the highlighted section is the actual transfer that you're approving this evening, but we also take a look at what, what has occurred in each one of our funds in the way of a cash balance. And so I'm gonna highlight some of the more significant changes that we've seen this year. The supplemental general fund is our local option budget, and it's actually increased about $464,000. Now, that can't be utilized, that fund actually rolls over each year and it impacts the levy, the local option budget levy. So because this is up, in theory, the levy could be a little lower next year, if everything else calculated exactly the same. You'll also notice, near the bottom, capital outlay has reduced $9 million. We were at $20 million, we're at $11 million. That's a combination of some one-time capital outlay projects, for example, IRC renovation, things like that, that won't repeat. But we're also, I'm gonna talk about it a little later on, we do charge custodial maintenance salaries and software to capital outlay, and we're becoming more and more dependent on that capital outlay fund, something that, like I said, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about it in just a minute. In the second, kind of third of that, of that schedule, I wanna highlight, special education is also down about 1.7 million. It was up last year, I believe we increased it at about $800,000. Now, we're decreasing it 1.7. And really, what causes that is, we budget at the beginning of the year amount we believe we are going to transfer to special ed. We transfer on an annual basis nearly $30 million, in addition to the state aid we receive for special ed. They did not receive the revenue we anticipated them to receive, and, but I stayed with the budgeted amount of the transfer and allowed the special ed reserve to take on that difference. Special liability, you also see decreases, $242,000. That's because we've had some unusual settlements and awards this past year in the liability realm. That's why that one is decreasing a bit. And the healthcare reserve is up about 247. That means that our health plan's performing well. Even during COVID, we actually had just slightly lower claims than anticipated. In the bottom third of that schedule, you'll notice that workers' comp, that second line, has increased $250,000. About five years ago, the state of Kansas told us we needed to start increasing our workers' comp fund balance. We did so. Now, the benchmark has moved. We have to keep going again, $250,000 a year over the next five years to build that reserve up in support of our self-insurance plan. The contingency reserve has decreased $5.4 million, and I'll be talking about that in the next coming slides. The textbook and student materials is down $630,000. I'll call that like a timing issue. We did two large adoptions. We did literacy and math. One of them happened right at the end of the year we elected to put it in this fiscal year. It really didn't matter which one it went to. We had been building that reserve in support of those adoptions. You'll see, bond and interest is slightly up. It's that debt curve that we're, we have some big payments. We're about ready to end that, those, and so we have been building balance in order to accommodate those. And the last thing I wanna point out is that bond 2016, where we have an $8.8 million increase, that's because we just sold our final series of the 2016 valuation. So all of those funds kind of grouped together into two categories. We have those that are available, reserves that are available to us, and others that are more restricted. And in that, kind of what I'll call that operating, it's not red just because it decreases, we just always show that's the red ones, and the black ones we can't really utilize for much. We, operating reserves are down 1.7, that's that special ed component. Contingency reserve is down 5.4. So let's take a little closer look at that general fund and why we need to transfer some of our expenditures to contingency reserve this year. We had waiting revenue loss, and what I mean by that is, you know we're down in students in this past year during the pandemic. We were paid on last year's students, which made us whole, but waiting's our current year. And many of those students that weren't in our system did not receive, used to receive at-risk funding. They weren't, they weren't here or did not apply for because of our free lunch, free and reduced status, which is what drives our at-risk waiting. So we were down about $1.2 million. Early in the year, we did transfer about $1.3 million to food service, because all the kids were not in, even though there was free lunch and we get, we get a payment from the federal government for those, we weren't feeding enough to support the system we had. As kids came back, they are now operating in the black. I just discussed the $250,000 for the additional workers' comp. We also have some ESAR timing. We, we have some expenditures still in the books, about a half a million that we're waiting our reimbursement for. School districts in Kansas operate on what's called a statutory basis. Some of you that have a little bit of accounting, that's cash basis, just like your personal checkbook, there is no receivable on our books waiting for that money. It is what it is on June 30th. If we've spent it, and yeah, we're gonna get that money back, it just will show up in the next fiscal year. So it's kind of a timing problem, but it makes, it shows those expenditures higher. We also, in, in the compensation realm, we had a, an unusually large number of staff move in column movement, you know, additional degrees this year, about $600,000 more than we had budgeted, and we always use kind of a three-year average. But that's, that's good news that our, that our staff is gaining in education. On a financial side, it becomes a little bit of a challenge. And then, I have this other of 1.5. I mean, we're, we are, in pressing the button and getting everything closed in the last two days, we'll have to analyze that further, but we are 70 to 80% compensation. We're a very labor-intensive organization, so I would presume that that is in the compensation realm. If you recall, we entered into a two-year agreement, so 24 months ago, we were trying to project exactly where we're all, all of our staff be on salary schedules and different places and with turnover. And obviously, I'm assuming a good portion of that 1.5 is gonna be in the compensation realm, but we'll definitely be able to take a look at that in the weeks to come. You know, we're a large organization, so these numbers get really large in a hurry. But an additional 2.1 million, like that column movement, and let's say all that 1.5, it happens to be compensation, that's about a half percent of our operating budget. So projecting forward and going through a historic event like a pandemic, I don't wanna call it a win, but I'll take a half, being within a half percent. But now, we have some work to do. We have to, we have to react to that and look at, turn our attention to next year's budget. So what do all those numbers really mean? Well, you as a board should probably be commended for supporting the freezing that we went through last spring of expenditures, because we wanted to build up our contingency reserve, because we didn't know what funding was gonna look like in the middle of a pandemic this year. So it was a very wise move on your part, because while I talk about going, utilizing 5.4 million of that contingency this year, you're really using, over the two-year period, it would be down 1.7. You built it up, we're gonna use it, we're gonna go a little deeper, and that's what a contingency reserve's for, at the uncertain times. And then we'll, we'll address how, how to return that back to our normal level. It's also really imperative that our families complete the KSDE, Household Economic Survey. The federal government has suspended the free, or the free lunch program. And there, so the measure that gets us that at-risk funding is gone. So KSDE has developed the Household Economic Survey to provide, a family fills that out. We are, we have set that up within our registration, online registration. We'll have a lot of communication around that, because not only, it's, it's not really just about the food. They, the kids may be getting free food, but it's about transportation discounts, reduced instructional material fees, and other fees across the district. So families want to qualify for this. It helps them, and it helps the district in our waitings. Food service, as I mentioned, has stabilized, so we don't see the 1.3 influx of cash to them from the general fund needed next year, as students are in. That is a self-sustaining group. Compensation's gonna have to be, you know, studied to align with current revenue. We, they, the state just opened our budget worksheets. We'll figure out what's our revenue available, and we're gonna have to figure out, does everything fit in that, or what adjustments do we have to make? But long-term, you know, I've been kind of beating that bota drum. We're approaching that, that time is this, this coming year. So we're gonna have to better align, you know, that tightening resources to what we are calling for in that strategic plan. So we're gonna realign our expenditures to really focus as, very intently on that plan. And finally, you know, our growing reliance on capital outlay is, necessitates a bond issue. We have sold the last of our bonds, it is committed on projects. The capital outlay fund cannot support replacement of technology. That's where we have funded our one-to-one. So we will be looking towards future bond issue to maintain our buildings, do the replacement cycles on the technology, and any new construction that might be necessitated across the district. So while tonight is the culmination of a fiscal year, it actually kicks off the budget process. And I just wanna go through this again, because I know you adopted the goals and timeline at a previous meeting, but it, it's really changed this year. On July 15th, at your next board meeting, I'll need authorization from the board to notify the county of your intent to exceed what's called the never, revenue neutral rate. And what that is, if you think of a million dollars, whatever levy that took to raise, if you don't just stay at a million dollars next year, and that rate goes up, you have to, you have to notify the county. We will want, if the, because valuations are up, the 20 mils that's levied across the whole state will trigger this. So nine times out of 10, every year, we'll be doing this process. Starting next year, a personalized letter or communication will be sent by the county clerk to every resident in our district, and with a personalized impact on their tax bill, of what that equates to. This year, there's kind of a reprieve, because I think counties around the state are trying to use, utilize email, so we don't have the mailing costs, which would be passed back to the district. This year, it's not, next year it would be. So you will authorize me to inform the county clerk of that. Then at our August 5th meeting, you'll approve the budget for publication. Remember how we would advertise the maximum amount? We're gonna do the same thing on the 15th. I'm gonna present the max. You can always go down, but we'll notify at the maximum levy. And on the 5th, you also set two different hearings. We've set them for the same day, but you have to still do the traditional budget hearing, and then you have to have a hearing about exceeding this revenue neutral rate. They can be on the same night, five minutes apart. On August 20th, we'll publish in the newspaper those notices of those two hearings. On September 2nd, we'll have the public hearing at our board meeting, as well as request adoption of the budget. And we have till September 20th to file that with the state and with the county. So it's a little longer process, a month later than we're used to, and a little more advertising and publication. So with that, the motion is kind of twofold. You're authorizing those yellow highlighted transfers, and you're also authorizing me to move expenditures of 5.4 million into the, against the contingency reserve fund from the general fund. Questions?
Questions from anybody? Do you want us to do two separate, is it okay with just one motion, though?
The one motion's fine.
One's good, okay. Yep, all right.
So on item 402, 4.02, I move to approve end-of-year transactions for fiscal year 2021, including the transfer of expenditures to the contingency reserve fund as presented, and authorize Mr. John Hutchison, Deputy Superintendent for Business and Operations, to make any necessary adjustments to these transactions in order to properly close fiscal year 2021.
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Schultz, second by Mr. Wickliffe.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hutchison. All right, there's some future action items on there, take a look at, and I believe we have an executive session.
For 10 minutes, please.
10 minutes. All right.
I would move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing potential property pursuant to the exception for preliminary discussion relating to acquisition of real estate under coma, and that the board return to the special meeting at precisely 6:00 PM.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. McCune, second by Ms. Schultz.
Mr. McCune?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Geary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.